Hello, everyone. I'm starting this now. Even though it's not quite time yet, because I want to make sure that we eliminate any technical problems. So we will actually start for real in a little bit. Brian, you are now a panelist.
Thank you. Let's see if this all can work. I let's see, I cannot start my video because the host has stopped it.
Yeah, I have only logged in as open SSF when I'm trying to run things like this. So I can make you a host. Why don't I make you a co-host? Why don't I make you a co-host?
Great.
You are now a co-host. Have have your infinite cosmic powers been increased? They have. Alrighty.
Like go to my head.
So anyway, thank you. Now we are being recorded right now. I imagine that we will cut off this first part before posting. But just in case, it will be best for you to not say anything that you don't want recorded.
I cannot say anything online anyways. I wouldn't want it as a headline in the New York Times.
I think that is wise advice. I try to do. I tried to do the same.
No, but security expert Dave Wheeler says, I think that is wise advice. I try to do the same.
Oh, my goodness. Sadly, I am human. I'm sure I will say something that out of context looks horrible. But I will at least say I try and, you know, hopefully there will be some forgiveness out there when I flub up.
Okay, well, I'll send some things in on Slack then.
Your your sound is muddy.
My sound is muddy. Thank you. Let me check this.
You might want to switch to a closer mic.
I might want to switch to the podcast mic that I actually paid money for. How does this sound?
Oh, spectacularly better.
Okay.
Say something.
La 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 la, rhubarb, rhubarb, apple pie.
Excellent. So much better, so much better. Well, however, your singing career may need some help.
No, my singing career will not get started over my it'll get started over my dead body.
Ah, I have done a lot of singing over the years, so it's 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 great training for the voice, I will say. Although I can't easily turn it off after training since I was a little kid, you know, focus the sound right here. My speaking voice is my my soft speaking voice projects.
The only singing I've done recently has been to my daughter while reading Lord of the Rings and trying to sing the Hobbit and Elf songs in it.
Oh, oh, that's so awesome. I like this story. This is an awesome story. Um, yeah, I don't have it right here, but there's actually a whole book about the Lord of Music and the Lord of the Rings. I cannot recommend it enough. It is spectacular. You know, it examines every motif. And you know how they interact over time, you know, this is this, this is that. You know, the history of the ring is this tune, this is this, and here's how they interact here and why they interact is just, you know, it reminds me of Wagnerian, but it's right now. And it's just really, really spectacular stuff.
Well, this the six year old will probably be probably be all into advanced linguistic analysis. And no, I was going to tweet out, hey, we've just finished reading the, you know, 1,200 pages of the Lord of the Rings. What what should we read next? You know, play Miss Alab War and Peace.
All right. And so this is a new kind of flex.
Exactly. Who should I? I'm happy to present slide from from my slides if that's appropriate.
We probably ought to talk about who who's presenting what I am happy to present. Whatever I assume that I was going to start with the the structure of the various groups slide. And keep going until somebody it was somebody else's turn.
I think from basically big picture so far, we'd start with you. And then if if Michael Scavetta is online, he would pick up Alpha Omega.
Yep.
And then back to you for everything else unless Dan or Abhishek are able to join and could take on salsa and the scorecard.
Right, right. So I think maybe we should just do his look to for Kim or Abhishek.
Kim can't make it. She just responded an email.
Okay, so yeah, there's a couple of K. I mean, Dan would be a perfectly reasonable person for salsa. For scorecard, I would think Abhishek, but obviously then only maybe we should quietly send them in a message after things going saying, hey, do you want to present on this part?
So Michael Scavetta confirmed he'll be able to speak to it. And then, yeah, we can just be ad hoc with the others. I'm, you know, even though this is a webinar, I want to keep it feeling casual. Does that make sense? And I see we already have two folks, Amir and Chris in our attendees list. Hi. So they probably can't hear us back. They might be able to chat.
They they can hear us, but because it's a webinar, they can't talk.
Oh, no, they can chat us, though. Hi. All right. Well, we're just getting getting set up and and chatting about the agenda and the like, so I'm probably going to, because I'm shy, turn my camera off now, just because I know it works and we'll come back on right right at the start of the hour.
Shyness is not something I've been accused of recently. However, I am properly caffeinating with my bubbly caffeine. So yeah, Chris, Chris, and we were talking about Lord of the Rings and the awesome music. On the awesome music score. So having nothing to do with this particular webinar, but you know, it's it's fun.
To be clear, the singing in the book, not the music in the films.
Well, that's what you were talking about. I was actually talking about the the musical analysis of the movies.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, which is really quite something.
Yep, yep.
Yes, Howard Shore. That's right. All right. So welcome. I'm going to mute myself so people don't hear have to hear me typing as much. I am going to monitor the chat. We have five minutes.
Hey, all. We're still getting ready. I see a few people will promote to a co-host. So just give us one second. Hello, everyone. It's 10 a.m. Pacific. We'll get started in a few minutes. Just let a few more people trickle in and we'll get underway. Thanks. All right, I think we're getting pretty close. David or Jerry, what do you think? Should we get started? David, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
Some may think that's better. All right.
Great. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Open SSF Town Hall for November. We try to do these on a on a regular basis, and this is mainly intended for people who are new to the community or considering joining the community, though it's also a chance for us to hear from current community members and just get an update on a couple of the projects going on and and hear from some of the community members, but also certainly have some time for a conversation within the community as well. So I this is intended to be loose, not necessarily, you know, tightly polished and wired. But we want to hear from all of you, whether you've been part of the community for a long time or are brand new to this. So please feel free to engage as we get going. And David, I'll depend on you to interrupt me if anything seems amiss. As with all Linux Foundation meetings, we start with the antitrust policy notice. This is just a reminder to all of us of why we're here. We're here to work on open source software, and in particular, in our case, improving the state of open source software and building digital public goods is kind of the new phrase, catchphrase, I think, but for a lot of what we're doing here. But if any of you have any questions about about this kind of thing, feel free to consult the Linux Foundation's antitrust policy notice linked here or ask one of us for some more guidance. This meeting, like all of our meetings, is also conducted under the aegis of the Linux Foundation's Code of Conduct. This is one other thing, just to familiarize yourself with. This is intended to make this space a professional space and and one where we should feel free to be ourselves, but be the best side of ourselves as well and and ensure a harassment free experience for all participants. And just one little bit of housekeeping. We'll try to see if we have a lot of questions. We'll do this through a moderated Q and A process. And certainly we'll want to hear from some other participants in the community. If you do have a question you want to ask, it might get lost in the stream of conversation on chat. So if you specifically have a specific question, please add it to the Q and A, and we will consult that as we go through. We have an agenda that'll take us probably through the first 25, 30 minutes of the hour together and then leave the converse and then leave the remaining 30 minutes for for Q and A. I'll give a brief, you know, welcome and an update on just the numbers and the commitments that we've received. And then hand the mic off to David to give us a big picture of what Open SSF is trying to to tackle out here. And then some updates on some of the projects either that have just launched or are already underway. And then we'll leave the time open for Q and A. So so just as a as a quick kind of blast, it's the last month we announced the not quite fair to call it a relaunch, because this really is about adding booster rockets to a rocket ship that's already was was well on its way to to interesting places. But on October 15, we announced at CubeCon, the 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 launch of new commitments, financial commitments from a set of major organizations, some of whom had been involved with Open SSF to date, some of whom are brand new to it. We had a lot of press coverage from that, and we I always laugh at the stock photos that folks decide to add to cybersecurity articles. So I thought this one was particularly cute. I would have hoped they'd add a stuffed goose to it, given our motto. Or given our mascot, and we'll have to find some way to get those plush gooses out to as many places as we can. I know David has one in his background. If you can see his video, he's holding it up. But but it was really great to get the public awareness of the importance of securing the software supply chain, which is what we're all about. To see the recognition for the hard work that's already been done by this community and in projects that have really kind of been launched in the periphery and under the aegis of of this, like salsa and Sigstore and and other projects that are that are coming up that, you know, we're still sorting out how to more better, more formally support at Open SSF. So really good last month. And the, as many of you know, that the model for how we at the Linux Foundation fund our efforts here. Typically, the financial sustainability model typically is focused on memberships by corporations, large and small, who commit to pulling pulling together and participating at a governance level for their membership dues, but really leaving the technical implementation work to the community. Really making sure that we're publicly engaged with anybody who has expertise and interest and time. The three magic kind of things. Hopefully you find all three at the same time, or at least two of them. And and make sure that what we're doing is is public facing and transparent and the like, but it's really the financial support of folks like those in the screen who are able to really help make this work. And I really just want to call out both the the long term commitment from the beginning, from many of the companies that are listed here from Google, from Microsoft, from IBM, and and several of the others from Red Hat, of course. And then many of the new participants here as well, AWS and SNEAK and VMware and Cisco. And OnePassword, which is that funny little logo in the lower right hand corner, as well as organizations like Fidelity, Morgan Stanley, and and, you know, and others who are realizing that they are major consumers of technology. You know, I found out last week Morgan Stanley has 12,000 software developers. How many of the other logos here have that many software developers on staff? It's crazy anyways. So I really happy to have those organizations committing to this process. And a week and a half ago, we hosted a governing board meeting on the periphery of the Linux Foundation Member Summit, where we had representatives, high level representatives from each of these companies, in some cases, the CTO of certain organizations or or the CISO or a senior VP who manages security products. These are high level representatives committing not just their organization's financial resources, but time to making this work. We also have been blessed by having a large number of the organizations that have been a part of this from the beginning, also signing up as general members, also a financial commitment. Certainly a major one, especially for organizations that are younger and and startups. And and they're also saying this is an important project. This is something we want to align with. We want to figure out how to incorporate it into what we do. So it's great to see organizations like GitLab and DTCC. DTCC, by the way, is an organization that trades all the securities on on Wall Street, actually holds them in in repository. And it's 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 one of those major kind of glue organizations in the financial services sector you never hear about. But they do something on the order of $2 quadrillion worth of trades a year in those securities. So so really major to see. Also really good to see the international footprint in the form of Tencent, for example, and I think we'll see a lot more representation from Asia coming very soon. So thank you to all of you who've brought your organizations and who've been involved in the project, obviously, since the beginning. But who also said, hey, this is worth those jumping in and committing to financially. And thanks to those commitments, we now have, I know, $2 quadrillion is not a phrase you often hear, said David in chat. I and that's that is not not an overstatement in the in the size. It is. It is in the thousands of trillions. So we had a number a little bit smaller than that so far, but a number that is still impressive nonetheless for open source projects. And and we do anticipate growing further. What we announced was over 10 million in new funding commitments from from those organizations to these efforts. And just over half of that is coming from funding from that membership, those membership dues, as I described. And that'll go into funding core open source, open SSF efforts, supporting the working groups and having for many of the efforts, the working groups, some funding to be able to apply, whether in the form of grants to be able to make the projects or software development to help build a service or other types of of kind of ways to increase the impact that those working groups can have. It'll also go into advocacy work, what you might call marketing and DevRel and PR and those kinds of things, reaching both to developers, but also to the end user community to help them understand why it's important to tackle many of these issues. I mean, a lot of what we need to do is raise raise the level of conversation out there and 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 make people aware of the good efforts in the working groups, but also the importance of tackling this problem. A lot of people just hear about the about the hacks, about the big breaches and assume somebody else is dealing with hardening the underlying infrastructure. Well, we are the cavalry. You know, and letting people know that that, you know, we're working on this is pretty important. We also committed to putting together some funding around mentorship programs that the Linux Foundation has done and other projects very successfully, as well as travel funds to help many of the developers in our community get to some of the events to be able to present their work at different conferences, as well as ourselves being able to have presences at events. You know, third party events, we haven't formulated the list exactly yet or really figured out how and where we want to be. But think about the typical security events out there that, you know, everybody in the space is at, making sure that our voice is there, rises above the noise. But also think about the non traditional types of IT events. You know, non traditional, non security specific, but ones that have an interest in that. For example, the Hims Conference in Health IT. Perhaps that's an event we should be at. So having some funding available for that and then looking at, and we haven't pulled the trigger on this, but looking at doing an open SSF branded and focused and owned event in 2022. Something we can start very simply, something that I, you know, we're pretty clear we could make just be a coming together of our community and really defining the agenda in a way that makes sense for us. I think would be a really interesting thing to get started, perhaps building on the great work that was already done at Supply Chain Security Con on the periphery of CubeCon a few weeks ago. And then finally, further fundraising and grant writing, because what we actually see Open SSF becoming is not just a home for the core projects you see at the working groups today, but for add on funds that can be focused on kind of mid to large size. You know, a couple hundred thousand to a couple million dollar size funds for specific for specific other types of work, work that can be well scoped, work for which there's a clear set of funders available for that kind of work. And a pretty clear place to put that those funds to work in a shovel ready kind of setting, for anyone who remembers that term. And and that's that's something we're really eager to get started on. In fact, the first of those funds is kind of a blockbuster one, probably larger than than any of other funds will be out of the gate. And that's $5 million committed to the Alpha Omega project. Now, we'll hear more about Alpha Omega later in this call. But the funds there will be put towards headcount to be able to accomplish the goals of Alpha Omega, some software development and some advocacy work. And it's, you know, these are, I should emphasize, dollar amounts that aren't the all that we're ever going to raise. These are dollar amounts that are in the form of a commitment for 2022. We all have to show that this is a wide application of funding in order to be able to make the case to get the next year's, you know, reup of that. We cannot take any of these dollars for granted that they'll come back next year. But this is money that we intend to spend over the course of the next year. So it's, it's pretty exciting stuff. To give you a little bit of a buy the numbers bit, just to get started, you know, on we're really just beginning our social media presence. It's something that we've got, you know, a somewhat active YouTube stream, a somewhat active LinkedIn group. We did refresh the website at the beginning of the year, but we also, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped this, this page. This is the one that's perhaps more interesting and more fun. In the 15 months since launch, we've pulled together 68 member organizations to help us in this effort. Beyond those, though, what really matters is the over 500, 576 members who participating individuals who have helped in the working groups, helped on the tack, helped get our, get the projects out there and running. And this is a very significant number. We have, the larger numbers, of course, are out just on social media, people following what we do, that sort of thing, Twitter, that kind of thing. But but also a number to be really proud of is that the edX courses that David played a big role in creating. Many of you also helped with have now seen 5,300 different people register to take those courses. And that's that, I mean, if if we can get that number into, you know, another another order of magnitude up this year, I think about the impact that will have. Think about the further impact it could have if we grow that further. This is, this is something that really I think could have a huge impact on the on the security space. And with that, just kind of brief overview, I want to pass the baton now to David to be able to take us into the next, to give us the big picture and a couple of the the updates. David, I'll just advance the slides, just tell me when, okay?
Thank you very much. Yeah, and I'll say next, and hopefully this time I'll remember to unmute myself. Okay, so I want to just kind of give a brief overview, particularly for those of you who've not interacted very much with the OpenSSF yet, we're hoping that you'll be convinced to become more involved, because we'd love even more participation. This is a little graphic that kind of shows the current OpenSSF structure. We have a new governing board, which may changes, but you know, I thought it'd be helpful to see how it's structured today. At the top, we've got a governing board, Brian's already mentioned that. Governing boards create a couple of committees to help it, anywhere from public policy, marketing, budgeting, planning. The public policy one, for example, is where, you know, when governments say, hey, we're thinking about policies related to this area. We would like, you know, some input advice, you know, help us understand this. We can at least alert various folks so that they can be, hey, this, there's a organization, you know, government organization which wants to create reasonable policies, they're looking for input. Obviously, the OpenSSF can't, you know, it doesn't decide policies, but we're hoping to provide them useful information to help them make good good public policies. So underneath the governing board is, of course, the Technical Advisory Council. This structure of a governing board and attack is pretty common across many Linux Foundation foundations. And inside the tack right now, there are a whole bunch of working groups, I'll just read them off, best practices, vulnerability disclosures, identify security practices, security tooling, security, supply chain integrity, which is a new name of the digital attestation working group, digital identity at station and securing critical projects working group. Next. So currently, we have all the projects within the OpenSSF live within some particular working group. That's not a requirement, it's just, you know, how things have been organized so far. We're actually expecting that when Project Alpha Omega gets, you know, that when when Alpha Omega gets running, it's going to be a sibling of the working groups, its own thing, it's it's a big thing of its own. But here, what you'll see is those working groups I just listed a moment ago and some of the projects that they've been working on and have released things. So the best practices badge focus, no, sorry, the best practices working group, sorry. Identification, awareness, education, security best practice of security best practices. This is where things like the CI best practices badge lives, the scorecard, something called the Great MFA Distribution Project, we'll talk about that in a moment. Collaboration with OWASP CRE and Security Knowledge Framework and the edX course. Vulnerability disclosure focuses on efficient vulnerability reporting and radiation, things like there's a guide for coordinated vulnerability disclosure for OSS projects. Identifying security threats and it's a convoluted name, basically it's trying to get information about security related information about projects, things like having a collected set of reviews of open source projects, having a dashboard so that when you're interested in a project, you can learn about it. Securing critical projects, this is identification of critical open source projects, which should help things like Alpha Omega. That's where criticality score, the Harvard research to looking for critical projects. There's also package feeds and package analysis, looking for malicious code and All-Star. We'll talk more about All-Star in a second. Security tooling, this is basically looking at various tooling related issues. Supply chain integrity is the new name of what was digital, digital identity at a station. I'm hearing my, my mic was a little low, can you hear me now? Better? I hope so. All right, so supply chain integrity, as I said, was named digital identity at a station, the issue is provenance. And this is where supply chain levels for software artifacts or salsa lives. And we'll also talk about Project Alpha Omega, which is its own thing. Next. So there's a lot of projects going on and I thought it might be helpful to get an idea of how the projects work together. There is, it would actually take me quite some time to walk through this diagram and I'm not going to try to do that. I'm going to walk through it at a high level, but you can see this picture and walk through it your own. But this is the picture that coming straight from salsa. What I did is I tried to assign these various projects onto the picture. In a couple of cases, it's a little hard to do this multiple places, but nevertheless, what I hope you can see is just the, from the placement of various sundry things. In fact, there's a lot of different projects we focus on different parts of the problem, because no one project is going to resolve all security related questions involving open source software or software in general. And so different projects work on different things, anywhere from the developer, you know, managing the source code, managing the bill, packaging it up, releasing out to consumers. We want to help developers select good packages by providing them package selection information. We want to identify critical projects and improve them. And sadly, I suspect no matter what we do, we're going to have vulnerability information occasionally show up front all projects. We want to reduce it, but we're not going to be able to eliminate it. So we also want to have improved ways to share the vulnerability information, process it, improve the software rapidly. And if you walk through, I've tried to color code and, you know, identify these various projects and where they live. Again, so you can see that it's, it's not all in one place, we're, we have different projects in a variety of different places.
Maybe we can have a design competition for the next iteration of of this big picture slide.
Sounds good. Next.
So is Michael Scavetta available?
I am, I am right here, I cannot go off, I cannot unvideo my video.
Oh, okay, well, why don't I, while I figure that out, why don't I just advance to the first slide and you can start talking? And then I will figure out if we can enable video.
Awesome. So yeah, thanks, everybody. I'm here to talk about Alpha Omega. So this is a project, it's designed to improve the security posture, meaning the security quality, the actual, you know, security of open source projects in two different ways. One is through direct engagement, which means reaching out to projects, figuring out what they need and helping. And the second is by identifying critical vulnerabilities at scale. This was provided through a joint funding by Microsoft and Google. Very appreciative to those organizations for for making this happen. This has been approved, so we are, we are kind of good to go, we are waiting. Well, Chief, advance to the next slide. Actually, well, let me just talk about more about what the project is. So it's really two different projects, Alpha and Omega. Alpha, we'll call them sub projects or streams or something that makes sense. But Alpha is targeting the most critical open source projects out there, somewhere on the order of 100. It may maybe slightly more than that, but it won't be 50,000. These are long term engagements, we're going to approach them with a learning mindset. Reach out to them, talk to them, figure out what they need, how, what security challenges do they have? They will all be different for each project. In some cases, we'll be able to help, in some cases, maybe we can't help, in some cases, maybe they don't want our help. Either way, we want to start that conversation. But when they, when we do agree on something that we can help with, it can take many different forms, we could help out with threat modeling, we could set up automation, we could do bug triage. We could, in theory, we could fund a resource, a security resource for that, for that team. We could do a source code audit. We could basically, if they need, if their biggest security challenge that they need rocks moved from point A to point B, we should pick up a shovel and help them move rocks. The most critical open source are projects are the ones that have a in a higher than, a much higher than average impact on the ecosystem if they were to fail spectacularly with a critical vulnerability. The actual decision of which projects are the most critical, the, we've asked the, the critical projects working group to help out in doing that selection criteria and kind of coming up with that list. But it would be the the types of projects and infrastructure that would make sense. So as an example, a package management system like NPM or PyPy or Ruby Gems are core to the to the ecosystem. It would make sense to to consider things like that. Similarly, Node, C Python, you know, Webpack, things like that, the the types of projects that are used basically everywhere. Those are the types of projects that we want to focus on with Alpha. Omega is the exact opposite in many ways of that. Omega is looking at the extremely long tail, everything, everything outside of that 100 and seeing whether we can run high quality security tools at scale, looking for just critical vulnerabilities, backdoors, custom malware, things like that. Having security analysts triage the results of that, so we're not going to be running the output of a tool and then automatically filing issues or throwing things over the wall. This is, this is going to be kind of, we want it to be a high quality experience for the for the maintainer. They're going to get good vulnerability information from us. There's going to be a tight feedback. One of the most important things here is because we are targeting the, a very, very wide set of projects, the quality of the tools have to be near magical, which means some of the headcount that we're asking for for this project is to be tuning this continuously. So every time a false positive comes up, we make sure that the false positive never comes up again by tightening the rules and adding more logic. This is an ambitious project, everybody, I've had a lot of, a lot of people reach out and say, hey, this thing sounds great, but it's like a really, really, really hard problem. It, the world needs this, so we're going to try our best and we're going to do it. Next slide. Okay, so Alpha Omega, we are, there's a public announcement that's going to be coming soon. So please don't, like, it's not super secret, but don't, please don't like pre announce. We're getting details on our 2022 operating plan, the first four to six months, I would say, is going to be a lot of learning, so we're going to be, we're going to try to be very agile and just do stuff and then learn and and change. We are going to be hiring some folks, so if you have candidates that you think would be that, you know, would would kind of love this role, ping me or you ping me on the Slack channel too, that I created for this. I'll have job descriptions out pretty shortly, we're still trying to figure out, should these be contractors, should these be full time, things like that. But I think the most important thing is to get the right people for this. And next slide, I think that was it.
That was it. Thank you so much, Michael. And there was a question asked and answered about how the projects will be selected. David shared that you had answered part of that and we'll be working with the Critical Projects Working Group as well to to try to figure out quantitatively and fairly which ones are most critical. But there's always going to be a bit of a subjective part to this as well, I suspect. Next up on salsa, Abhishek, are you around and able to chat?
Looks like I have trouble with the media too, but I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can, we can hear you, that's great, and I think we'll try to get the video.
Try again, I just made some changes.
Okay, can you guys see me? Yes, so salsa is stands for supply chain levels for software artifacts. The work started, I would say, two or three months back and we have pretty strong participation from the community. So from members at various companies like VMware, Intel, DataDog, Citibank, to name a few, have been involved in contributing to the salsa spec. So we have released salsa V 0.1 spec that is available for the community to review. Recently, we also came to consensus on the salsa provenance formats, which got a significant revamp for usability. And next, we are looking to work more on the implementation aspect, so creating more demos for these different levels. And so that community can easily uptake them. Any questions on the front, I think we'll do probably questions at the end, right?
Yeah, yeah, and and we just really wanted to people be aware that this is an effort that's taking place. Which working group is the home for this, by the way?
Uh, this is the digital identity at a station working group that salsa is part of. In the community, we have been discussing to rename it to supply chain working group, because that encompasses the entire stream of work. So that's in progress.
Right, right. And is, what's the, what's the newest thing that's come out of this also effort?
It's the provenance format, V 0.2 is released, I think that's last week, so that's the newest thing that came out.
Very cool. Okay, great. And on the vulnerability disclosure guide, we thought it'd be worth sharing a little bit about this. I know Jennifer is on the call, I don't want to put her on the spot unless she wants to to speak to it. I know it's something that she's, she's worked on quite a bit. Let's see, Jennifer, are you up for sharing or or should David cover this?
Um, sure, yeah, no, I'm happy to jump in. Thank you. So the vulnerability disclosure group, which is led by Christopher Robinson Crowe from Intel, has been working together on a number of things. The the core of one of these that we've released recently is a guide to coordinated vulnerability disclosure. So basically what we're trying to do is create an accessible resource that lets us into some of the things that open source maintainers may or may not know and are often unspoken about doing coordinated vulnerability disclosure and about receiving vulnerability reports from security researchers to better empower maintainers to have a successful disclosure with a researcher, but also to set some norms as to what we can expect in terms of well meaning research compared to things that might be less desirable or less cooperative. So really what we're looking to do is give people good guidance to help them be more successful in receiving bone reports and in creating patches. So the first version of this guide has been released, you can see it on GitHub, but we're continuing to build out white papers, additional resources, we have some open GitHub issues about some exciting things we might do in the future, like helping for incident response or kind of emergency scenarios when teams are overwhelmed by the type of report. by the type of report that they receive, either because they can't write the patch or because coordination with downstream projects is high impact but difficult to, to do. So there's a lot of great work in this space and we absolutely welcome anyone who is interested in helping us improve vulnerability disclosure for open source projects to get involved with that group. We'll also be doing a lot of outreach that we're working on preparing right now to help developers and open source maintainers better work with researchers.
Thank you, Jennifer. Really important work to do. Thank you for that. David, I'll pass the mic back to you to talk about the great MFA distribution project.
Okay, so I don't think I need to explain too hard to many people here that unfortunately some of the insertions of various malicious code and malicious package in the past has occurred because attackers managed to acquire passwords, steal, basically stealing passwords, and then exploit that to log in as the developer and distribute code that in fact was not approved or a package that was not approved by the actual developer. So there's a solution for this. So, you know, the solution will be getting more open source software developers to use multi-factor authentication tokens. That doesn't mean it's impossible to steal credentials, but it's a whole lot harder when you've got hardware tokens instead of just, I got to copy a couple characters down. I'm happy to say that both Google and GitHub have agreed to offer a set of free tokens, MFA tokens, to give away to select open source software developers. And so this is a project currently mine to basically do some, currently in early stages, basically trying to figure out, well, who would get those token, the free ones? How do we make sure these are, these are distributed securely? Because we don't want this to be the best supply chain attack ever. So we're talking about, you know, using coupon codes and so on. How to measure impact? And probably the most important is how to develop or point to very simple, short instructions. Developers are really busy. They don't have time to re-figure out from scratch how to do all this stuff. So we, you know, if you're using this common platform, using this token, here's how you do it. Simple, short as possible and focus on the typical needs for open source developers because a lot of the documentation for these is often very generic and doesn't tell you, doesn't skip those things don't matter and doesn't focus on the, here's what you do. If you're interested in this, please get involved in the best practices working group. Really, this is one of those things that, you know, the tasks crosses across multiple working groups, but since the expectation is a lot of the work is really going to be trying to figure out what the, how to describe the best practices as simple as possible. That's where this lives, at least for now. For more, there's the repo. Next.
Thanks, David. And next we'll go to Scorecard and All-Star. And Abhishek, can I call you back to the mic to, to, to cover the updates here?
Yes, definitely. So at a very high level, like Scorecards project is scaling pretty well. It now runs on 1 million repositories on GitHub and gives idea on their security posture. Another thing that we recently did was it's actually has a new scoring system. So rather than having a pass or fail, it gives you much more granular scores and provides you remediation tips as well on how to actually remediate these things. We are also working on this new GitHub signing solution, not sorry, not signing solution as part of the GitHub code scanning pipeline. So it's being integrated there as an app there. And let's see what else regarding the All-Star project. It's running on more than 5,000 repositories right now and getting more tightly integrated with scorecards checks. And there is also ongoing collaboration going with Sixtore and Salsa projects on how we can show more of the code signing compliance inside Scorecards. And these projects are part of, Scorecards is part of the security tooling working group and All-Star is part of the critical projects working group.
That's great. Thank you so much. So that was really just kind of a, a taster of the fire hose. That is the different projects going on at, at, at OpenSSF. You know, a different perhaps than other open source projects. You know, as, as David mentioned, we're predominantly organized by working group and then there's projects within each of the working groups. As you can see, a lot of these are about standards, about scorecards, about a little bit of code here and there. But mostly about how do we all work together in, you know, in a coordinated fashion to uplift both the, the 100 most critical open source projects, but also the, the broad base as well. And so there's a lot more kind of in the works and, and things that are initiated now and, and, and kind of getting to the same point as the ones that we, we chose to highlight. But if there's any other efforts that anybody on the call who's been involved with OpenSSF wants to highlight before we dive into kind of an open question and answer time, feel free to, to kind of raise your hand and we'll try to, try to pick you and, and give you the floor for a little bit. Anything else going on in the OpenSSF land that folks want to, want to chat about or share? I'm watching the Oh, I see a mirror. Okay, Amir, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just want to give a quick update on some work we just completed in collaboration with CNCF, reviewing Flux, a component of Kubernetes. So we coordinated a security engagement resulting in the patching of a high severity CVE as well as around 21 other security improvements to the software. So going to be sharing that with everybody via email as well as sending links to the workgroups. So you can kind of go into, look at that in detail. The full report is published online, so anyone can view it. So thank you.
That's great. That's great. Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Yeah, Brian, if, if I may jump in real quick, I, I think the Flux thing is actually an example. You know, you mentioned, hey, there's not, you know, there's some code, but it's not all code here. We're not interested in taking over projects. We're very much interested in working with projects to help make things better. And I, I think, you know, if you see a lot of the things that the openness has been doing, it's very much helping successful projects succeed further.
Thanks, David. Amir, any other thoughts or should I move on?
Um, I'll just, I'm sharing the link now per Jennifer's request.
Okay, okay, great. We do have another question in the Q and A from Eric Heitzman. Eric, I can read it or I can unmute you to read it if you'd like.
Hi, this is Eric Heitzman. I was curious if Project Alpha Omega is considering working with commercial tool vendors to purchase tools like static analysis, dynamic analysis, or threat modeling software to assist these top 100 open source projects?
Yeah, I'll answer one part of this quickly and then, of course, open it for others to chime in. But I think we're certainly interested in being an aggregator of the outputs of tools, open source, commercial, otherwise, when it comes to the things that are kind of hard to do and the things for which there aren't really great open source equivalents, such as the kinds of tools you mentioned. So we already have a couple of integrations already in a, in a tool that the Linux Foundation has been using for security kind of analysis of its, of its projects that will be expanding as part of Project Alpha Omega to other, other open source projects and, and to, to be relevant and then involved with the Alpha Omega effort. So certainly interested in talking with you about, about other tools that you think might be appropriate as well. So feel free to get in touch with us off to the side to talk further about that. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jacques, let me unmute you or allow you to talk here. Would you like to ask your question verbally?
Yes, I had to. I'll go with the second one, which is what projects, if, if any, have we had a chance to talk to about the Alpha component of Alpha Omega?
Michael, you want to take?
Sure. Yes. So, so as part of kind of throwing the idea of Alpha around, we reached out to about 10 projects. About half of them got back. So, and they, they were all, all amenable to the idea that the problem is I don't want to go too far down the route of making it seem like we're promising to do something with them and then pull the rug back. So I was trying to be very careful in how we engage. We do have one very high-profile organization that we have started conversations with about a kind of a marquee initial project. I don't want to talk about that in this kind of semi-public forum, but I can connect with you offline about, about that. I would like that to be announced at the, at the public announce of, of Alpha Omega. The, if you look at the, the top projects of the criticality score listing, a lot of those do seem to be good candidates for, for Alpha. And that's really what we'll be starting. So, so we, it's a little bit of chicken on the egg. I didn't want to jump the gun and have too many in-depth conversations without having the commitment that we'd be able to do something about them. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, well, we've turned through the open questions in the Q and A tool. I don't see anyone with their hand up still. Anything else that anyone involved with the project wants to toss out as an update to something that they've been working on? Or they wanted to draw some, some attention to? How about anything on the periphery? There's so many. I mean, this is one thing. We're not trying to be the home for all things security. Our hope is certainly that what we do is inspire a whole lot of efforts in every open source initiative to, to go and build things and using our standards, using our specs, perhaps upstreaming to us in some ways here and there, but, but certainly lots of security efforts on the periphery. So we'll count a lot of things. Looked like, did Kay, did you raise your hand? Go ahead and unmute. You should be able to.
I did. Okay. Yeah, so I thought I could mention a little bit that's going on. This is related to the executive order, but there's some great collaboration that's happening across this also project, which is currently in the OpenSSF and then a couple of projects that are just outside of OpenSSF. One is the Intoto project and another one is the SCIM project, Supply Chain Integrity Model. And the SCIM project, I'll mention, we're hoping to move into OpenSSF into the, the newly re-scoped digital identity, soon to be supply chain working group in OpenSSF. And the collaboration that's going on is around arriving at some standard data format and some standard schema specifically that we can all use. You know, companies like Microsoft, other companies that are part of the OpenSSF for describing our conformance to the requirements in the executive order. So that's, that's, and it's happening kind of behind the scenes right now, but hopefully soon we'll be having those discussions about the standard format and the standard schemas also inside of the OpenSSF. The format that we're starting with is the Intoto attestation format, which is currently used with, with salsa. So if folks are interested in that, you can do the lookup on Intoto attestations and find more. The other discussions that are going on are around having a common signing format for all of these supply chain attestations. And there are a couple that are floating around in different groups and we're hoping to have discussions and, you know, broader discussions and with companies in OpenSSF and have those as part of the, the new supply chain integrity working group. So that's, you know, some, some of that is, there are steps of it that are, that are formed and other things that will be coming down in the future. But then we have big plans for discussions and activities in the supply chain working group.
That's great. And I'm excited to learn more about SCIM and see where, where we can bring that in. Ava, would you, you want to, you wanted to share something?
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thanks for making a little moment for me to talk about Git Bomb. This is some work I mentioned at the Supply Chain Security Summit and anyone who's run into me at a hallway or online probably heard me talk a little bit about it. Or Ed Wornicki over at Cisco is also working on this. It's a project to rally support around using an existing and well-known file format to track the supply chain of, from source code through binaries across languages. Integrate this into the, the language tool chains. We'll be setting up our meetings and getting all that sort of community infrastructure going in the next couple of weeks. And then happy to chat with OpenSSF folks. I'll bring it in here over time.
Thank you, Ava. Yeah, I, I find it super interesting as a, as a, as a compliment to so much of the, the rest of the work that we're doing and, and perhaps something that we can really align very closely to it. We had one question in private chat from Mu Tula Ramon, who asked, even though the security risks are much talked about for open source software, how about the license associated with, with open source software? What are the key risks the organization should be concerned about? Any projects focused on open source licenses? I will mention here perhaps that one of the key tools for license conformance in the open source space has been a standard called SPDX that has been developed by a whole community of people working under the aegis of the Linux Foundation for a long time to try to make sure that given a body of code that you think is open source licensed, is every underlying dependency, every underlying bit actually open source licensed? And which license am I allowed to redistribute it under? You know, knowing that some licenses carry obligations on other pieces of code. SPDX is now also really a, a, a key platform, a key standard being looked at for SBOM functionality, which is what the executive order called for. And I, you know, there's a couple of options out there and I think there's going to be some intentful effort to put those into a box so that we combine efforts there rather than compete on something as fundamental as the documentation format for a standard for bill of materials. But when it comes to licensing, I think that's, that's this interesting access point between what we're doing and what's come before. Lots of other places to talk about open source licensing, the open source initiative, for example, being one of them. But I, but really the, the security work we see here is fairly, fairly complimentary to it, if, if pretty distinct. Okay, with that, we are at
Can I, can I quickly add?
And I do, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just real, real quick. As far, you know, as far as the licensing, OpenSSF isn't particularly focused on licensing, but obviously care about components. There's another group, OpenChain, which is actually a standard for how to intake open source software and look at things like licenses and so on. It's, it's more than that, but if you're interested, please go take a look at OpenChain.
Great. Thank you, David. And Azim, I, I did catch your hand up, so I had to promote you to a panelist to be able to, to speak. Would you care to ask your question? If you can unmute yourself because you're not unmuted yet. There you go. Azim? Are you there? We can't hear you. If you can type your question, I can read it aloud. And I think Azim's question will be the last one, actually, while we're waiting for him to type it. Just type it into chat, Azim, if you can. There was a question about whether the meeting is being recorded. Yes, it is. And how the recording will be made available? We will post it as soon as we've been able to, to, to just validate it onto the OpenSSF website and share it through social. And I don't know if automatically we send the link to everybody who attended, but we'll, we'll try to do that as well. Jory is also dropping in links to the OpenChain project and to SPDX dev, just germane to the, the last conversation point. And I think with this, unless Azim is still typing his question, any other last questions or comments or thoughts before we wrap up? Okay, well, with that, I want to thank you all for attending and I look for the recording soon. Please come to the next town hall and we'll give you all updates on what we do then. Thank you, of course, to, to Michael, to Jennifer, to Abhishek and David, of course, for putting together this great content and all of you for asking great questions. And we will see you all again soon. Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.